I'm now calling this meeting to order at 7:13 PM. Vice President Khadijah Brown will be joining us virtually, but in accordance with the Brown Act, in order for her to do so, we need to take a vote to approve her remote participation. Is there a motion, colleagues, to approve Vice President Khadijah Brown's virtual participation?
I move to do so.
One second. Ms. Tyrus, can you do a roll call?
Director Shonoski?
Yes.
Director Liao?
Here.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Vasilev?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Tyrus. We'll now approve the agenda for this evening's meeting as amended. Are there any other changes?
What were the amendments? I'm sorry, I missed.
Were there any changes, Superintendent? All contracts are... Okay.
It's in the script, that's all.
Well, great. Is there a motion in a second to approve the agenda, colleagues?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We will now report out from closed session. Vice President Brown, are you able to report out?
Um, uh, President Vasilev, because Vice President Brown is joining us virtually every vote this evening needs to be a roll call for the Brown Act, so if she's joining us, we need to also consider her vote.
Okay, so do we have to re-vote to...
Um, is she with us? Yeah, well, I'd have to... To approve the agenda, yes.
Okay. All right, can you do a roll call for the agenda?
Director Shonoski?
Yes.
Director Liao?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown? She probably will be joining us momentarily. Uh, President Vasilev?
Yes.
Is she... Okay, so are you promoting her? Is she online? Can she report out from closed session? Okay. One second, we're just making sure she's able to join and report out. Thank you.
Would you like to redo that vote, President Vasilev? With Vice President Brown joining us now?
Sure, the agenda vote?
Yes.
Yes, so there was a motion in a second? And then, are you gonna roll call again? Okay.
Director Shonoski?
Yes, again.
Director Liao?
Yes.
Director Babett? Excuse me.
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes, now that you can hear me.
President Vasilev?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank...
Right. Now we'll report out from closed session. Vice President Brown, are you able to report out?
Yes, I am ready and able to report out. Uh, thank you so much.
One second, Vice President Brown, I think there's an issue with the sound.
Okay.
Go ahead, President... Vice President Brown?
Can you all hear me okay now?
Unfortunately, we cannot.
The view is not changing, so we can see it either.
Um...
If it's okay with you, Vice President Brown, I can do the report out while we fix the technology?
Please, go right ahead.
Chris, uh, can you guys hear her?
Our mics way up?
Yeah, I turned up the mics in here, but it appears that her microphone is not sourced throughout, so we'll see. Okay. Vice President Brown, are you able... You have headphones? Well, you... We can hear you, but we just can't... You're not loud enough, so Vice President Vasilev...
Can you hear?
Okay, I'll just read out the notes while we figure this out and maybe turn down the volume for the mics. I'll read them out quietly. Uh, closed session was called to order at 5:38 PM. For Agenda Item 3.1.1, uh, there was a motion to accept Council's recommendation made by Director Shonoski, seconded by Vice President Brown. All directors voted in favor. For Agenda Item 3.1.2, the board heard an update and provided direction. For Agenda Item 3.2, uh, the board heard an update and provided direction. And, uh, Agenda Item 3.3 was not discussed, and Agenda Item 3.4 was also not discussed and will be discussed at the next closed session. And that concludes the report out from closed session. Great, and now we will hear from our superintendent.
Thank you, President Vasilev. Good evening, everyone. Um, on Monday, I was able to attend a ceremony at Berkeley High School, uh, where our student Farhat Norzad received the Chris Kindness Award. I never knew there was such thing as a kindness award, but there is. This is a monthly award that encourages kindness by shining a light on the people in our community whose selfless acts, both large and small, make our lives a little bit brighter. Um, Farhat's teacher shared that Farhat immigrated to Berkeley from Afghanistan actually last April, and she's a part of our multilingual program, MLP community at BHS. And she speaks, uh, five or six languages, um, as a high schooler, right? That's like, that's a wow. Um, since arriving in the US, she has become a peer mentor and a major support to many students at BHS. She's a shining example of what is so great about our Berkeley community and in particular, what is great and amazing about our students and the work we do together to ensure that our schools and classrooms are places of empathy, humanity, learning, and of course, kindness. Right after that ceremony, I was able to interact with students and exhibitors at the Berkeley High School's Green Career Fair. One of those... Another thing, and I'm like, whoa, I never heard of that. So it wasn't just a regular career fair. It was a career fair that was really focused on green jobs and jobs that are about sustainability and various pathways that exist, um, in those fields. This, uh, Career Fair was initiated by our BHS Green Team and student leaders and supported by the BUSD Climate and Sustainability Staff. Um, it was a fabulous opportunity for our students, again, to learn more about both local businesses and careers in the green industries beyond. They were able to engage, ask questions, and even learn about internships they could participate in right now. Um, I invite you all to attend our next board meeting, where we'll actually hear an update and highlights on our green efforts and sustainability efforts here in BUSD, not just at the high school, but throughout. I want to remind you that January in BUSD is Disability Awareness and History Month, and we continue to celebrate together. Tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM, we're holding a virtual community conversation on disability awareness and neurodivergence. The Zoom link for this engagement can be found on the BUSD website. And then, on January 31st, at the Oxford Theater, that theater right over there, the North Region SELPA will host a special screening of the film Hopesville, which is a documentary investigation into dyslexia and the shifts in literacy instruction in schools. The doors open for that event at 5:30. As we continue our focus on literacy, um, I want to call your attention to our sixth quarter report for BUSD's Literacy Action Plan that's included on tonight's agenda as an information item. It covers the period of October through December 2023 and provides highlights and next steps for the work of the district and our literacy action plan. And I encourage you to read the full report. It's a good nighttime read, um, but want to highlight a couple of things for those of you who might not have time. The report includes a detailed timeline that we've developed to support a K-5 English Language Arts curriculum adoption. It also includes information about the many sessions of professional development that our K-5 educators have engaged in, um, as well as it highlights that this Monday coming up, our district will engage in our Full Staff PD Day, um, that continues to focus on literacy, uh, for not just our K-5, but our K-8 educators. And our educators at BHS, BTA, BIS will also be in professional development as well that day. Um, finally, actually, this is not finally, but another surprise, this is full of surprises today. January is actually School Board Recognition Month. Did you all know? We had, I mean, it was a month for everything. Um, and it's this time to salute the more than 5,000 California School District and County Office of Education Board members, the largest group of elected officials in the state, um, that aid and support our students' success by establishing their local education agency's mission, vision, policy, and priorities. And I'm gonna stop reading, because you guys did not seem excited about the fact that you have a whole month, and I'm trying to honor you right now. Okay, finally, I want to acknowledge the service of our student board member. You might notice that this seat has been vacant, uh, for the last couple of meetings. Um, our board, Student Board Director Janai Dale, um, has not been present, and I was like, where are you, Janai? And he just decided to let us know that he graduated early. So congratulations to Janai. Um, he has graduated, which is great for him, but not good for me, because now I don't have anyone to talk to, uh, during the meetings. But we, uh, really are excited about Janai's contributions while on the board and all the amazing things that we know that he's going to do and be, um, in our, in our community and beyond. Um, he did complete his high school education, and he is now in the process of applying to colleges and planning to embark, um, on any career of his choosing. And he wanted to make sure that I share with you all what a pleasure, uh, he felt it was to serve in this capacity here in BUSD. And that, President Vasilev, is the end of my comments tonight.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. Um, before we move on to public comments, I just wanted to let you know that I ran into Janai not that long ago and was able to congratulate him in person. He's got a job, I'm not gonna say where he's working, but, uh, was very proud of his accomplishments, and, um, thank you for highlighting them tonight. All right, and now we'll move on to public comments. Uh, before we begin, I would like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating or participating in any physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public, or approaching the dice without permission. Miss, as Ms. Tyrus has already explained, there are two opportunities for public comments at each meeting. Now and at the end of the meeting, if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. And you may also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during public comment. Board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. These are hybrid meetings, so we have public commenters in the boardroom and online. We have designated 20 minutes to our in-person speakers, followed by 10 minutes for our online speakers. Anyone who wishes to make public comments should raise their virtual hand now, so Ms. Tyrus can organize. And if you're a student, please add "s" to your name on the online comment, so I can call you first. Um, each public commenter, we have a lot of comments tonight, and we're gonna... I'm gonna give you one minute each tonight, so we can hear as many comments as possible. And please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of each speaker's allotted time, so time your comments accordingly. I will call your name in the order of speakers, uh, per agenda item. To keep things moving, I'd like to ask that the speaker who is next in line come forward and await near the mic. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name, please, you know, state it at the beginning to make sure your name is pronounced correctly. And we'll now begin our public comments. So I'm going to start, uh, with, um, Ethnic Studies, because it's the most amount of cards. And I will call the first couple of speakers. Chloe Chaudry, Andrea Pritchard, and Eva Diaz. Please approach the dice.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Chloe. I'm a Berkeley resident and mother of three Berkeley High graduates. Berkeley is the home of free speech, and I think it's very important that we support Berkeley School District teachers being able to discuss what's happening in Palestine. With more than 25,000 people killed, it would be egregious not to bring up these atrocities in the classroom. These classes are supposed to cover historic oppression. This is not just a foreign policy issue. Our tax dollars are funding this killing. Bay Area families' relatives are being killed. We personally know families who've lost more than 70 of their relatives in Palestine. And here in the US, Muslims are being violently targeted, um, from the six-year-old who was murdered in Chicago to the Stanford student who was injured in hit-and-run, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes people will say that speaking up for Palestine is anti-Semitic. As somebody who was Jewish before becoming Muslim, my family, many of them were killed in the pogroms. It is not...
Thank you very much. Next, we have Andrea Pritchard, followed by Eva Diaz.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Andrea Pritchard, and I teach history at Willard Middle School. I'm here in support of the Liberated Ethnic Studies curriculum. I'm helping to... I'm advising on one of the groups. But I, I, I'm here because I've... People have been telling me that there's opposition to it, and I'm very concerned about that. There's been allegations of antisemitism. I can tell you this, I have had complaints filed against me at my school because I dared to compare the colonization process that the United States engaged in with that of the colonization process that's happening in Israel-Palestine. Some of my students are concerned, some of their Palestinian students and Arab students, and they're feeling the secondary trauma impacts. And they wanted to start a club. Unfortunately, before our club had ever even met, they had... There were three emails, and my principal convened a meeting of concerned parents who were concerned about the fact that we were meeting. They were concerned that it might, it might result in hate speech.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Pritchard. If you could, please email the rest of the comments to the board, that would be great. Um, next, we have Eva Diaz, followed by Natalie Ordway and Hillary Kilmanick.
Dear Superintendent Nikia Ford, more than these... The board members. My name is Eva Diaz, and I am a mother of two students in the Berkeley School District. We are from Spain and moved to Berkeley four years ago. This community is diverse, educated, creative, and caring, and the school district is all the above. Since the continuing attack of Palestine by the State of Israel, our entire community is out of its nature. The impact and the suffering are profound. As many of us tried, that our council representative thus a ceasefire resolution or job in the community needs to address this issue at the school district level too, through education and protection, protection of, of our values. I would like to offer my commitment to this task as a parent. I am here to ask the school district that it supports the Ethnic Studies and its collaboration with the Liberated Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Consortium. I am here to ask you to protect and support our...
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. If you could email the rest of your comments, that'd be great. Next, we're moving to Natalie Ordway, followed by Hillary Kilmanick, and then, Ofer Grimbeck?
According to Euro-Mediterranean Human Rights Monitor, since November, over 90,000 people in Gaza have been killed, been wounded, or gone missing. More than 30,000 of those were killed by Israeli bombs financed by America, and over 12,000 of those, nearly half, are children. That's more children than are served by this school district by nearly a third. Palestinian Americans are losing family members by unthinkable numbers. At the same time, here in America, violent expression of Islamophobia is on the rise. BUSD's Arab, Muslim, and ally staff, students, and families have the right to learn and protest about the siege that is inflicting this on them. BUSD's Ethnic Studies work and contract with Liberated Ethnic Studies is also being threatened, most recently by the unfounded claims in a letter from the Californian Legislative Jewish Caucus. Anti-Zionism is not antisemitism. American Jews and Arabs alike are put at risk by America's chronic issues with white supremacy and nationalism, not by learning about, supporting, and advocating for marginalized communities like Palestinians. BUSD protects the Liberated Ethnic Studies contract, protect the right to protest, stop the silencing of Arab-Americans, the weaponization of their identities and solidarity, and the intimidation of their protests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hillary Kilmanick, followed by Ofer Grimbeck, and...
Hillary receiving her time to me.
Um, so we really don't see...
Oh, she can see time. She just has to say it.
Are you Hillary Kil... Okay, Hillary Kilmanick. And then, okay, are you Ofer Grim?
I'm Yossi Fendel.
Hey, let me see if I have your card. One sec. Did you turn in a card?
Did turn in the card.
You did. Okay, yeah, go ahead. I don't, I don't see your card, but...
My name is Yossi Fendel, and I have a child in ninth grade at Berkeley High School. On December 18th, I was informed by my child's Ethnic Studies teacher of his plan to teach from a curriculum on Israel and Palestine that had been vetted by the district administration. And for the past five weeks, I have been requesting access to this curriculum, so that I can see what is being taught to my child's class. I have sent 20 emails to the teacher, to the director of curriculum, Chris Albeck, to the principal, and others, to see this curriculum, but for five weeks, I have been prevented from seeing what will be taught in my child's classroom. I have suspicions of a serious anti-Israel prejudice in this curriculum that could cause harm to Jewish and Israeli students. The secrecy surrounding this curriculum seems to me to confirm those suspicions. And if I could see this curriculum, I could warn the teacher about any dangers it contains. But if BUSD does not feel confident enough in their curriculum materials to share them with parents, then these materials have no place in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have Ofer Grimbeck? Okay, one, one second. I'm on Ethnic Studies, so... Oh, Alana Pearlman? You're Alana Pearlman?
I'm speaking on ethnic...
All right, thanks.
Yeah, on policies related to that. Oh, can I start my time in a minute? Thanks. I'm the parent of three BUSD students negatively impacted by increasing antisemitism at school. Last year, BUSD contracted with Liberated Ethnic Studies, a curriculum vetoed by Governor Newsom for being insufficiently balanced and inclusive, and widely criticized for its vehement antisemitism and erasure of Jewish history. The curriculum was intentionally agendized over summer break in an effort to silence potential opposition to its passing. California's education and BU code and BUSD's own policies explicitly prohibit teachers from providing instruction promoting discriminatory bias against nationality, ethnicity, or religion. Yet educators are disregarding such policies and using their classrooms as platforms to disseminate their personal and political agendas. And to any adult educators in positions of power centering themselves as the victims of censorship, it is our students who are the real victims here. My own child was forced out of his classroom due to antisemitism and stuck in the library and health center for an entire week. Okay? Until they could find a new class, so...
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ahmed Hussein, followed by Emma Kinsenbauer, and then Juliet Lee.
Uh, good evening, good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Ahmed Hussein. I'm a volunteer at the Oakland School District, uh, part-time volunteer. I wanted to quote, um, a recent event that happened in the Columbia University. This is a quote from the Columbia SJP, the Students' Justice for Palestine. Uh, so the quote, this is how the quote, uh, quoted, um, "Two Columbia's university students, both IDF soldiers, sprayed a chemical weapon on peaceful protesters. Skunk spray is used on Palestinians in the West Bank by the Israeli occupation. It is known to cause nausea, abdominal pain, and vomiting. Dozens of students have given us testimonies of their clothes and hair having the foul smell left after even the initial burst of smells at the protest. The smell only worsens and spreads after being washed. Some students are experiencing nausea and burning eyes even hours later. Clearly, this is my words, the, that's the end quote right there. Clearly, there are people willing to do heinous crimes in order to suppress peaceful protests against the genocide in Gaza."
Thank you very much. If you could email the rest of your comments, that'd be great. Next, we have Emma Kinsenbauer, followed by Juliet Lee, and then we'll move on to the next topic. Oh, Emma, you're, you're a student, right?
Yeah.
Next time, can you just mark that you're a student, so I call you first?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, no worries.
Okay. Hi, board members. I'm Emma. I'm speaking on behalf of gender-expansive youth activists at BHS. At Berkeley High, trans students get ogled, harassed, and assaulted in gendered restrooms. Choosing to pee to try to focus on our curricula means losing 15 minutes of class. Class that teaches us we belong. Choosing to pee means outing yourself. Everyone knows the only kids who wait in line for a gender-neutral restroom are trans. You don't stand alone when you belong. This is Berkeley. School is supposed to be safe for us here. We just want to belong. So tell us when we're gonna be safe at our school. I want to know. Tell us when we'll belong. I need to know. Tell us now. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Next, we have Juliet Lee.
Hi, oh, I just lost my notes. Hi, um, I'm Juliet Lee. I'm a Jewish BUSD parent. I have a few requests. One, please listen to our queer youth, our trans and non-binary youth. They are speaking up, and we need our district to respond to them. Um, please protect our Liberated Ethnic Studies programs. This curriculum helps our kids with the critical thinking skills that they need to navigate our socially complex and far-from-perfect world. Um, please let our teachers teach about Gaza. What is happening in Gaza is not a religious conflict, and the students have a right to learn about the historical roots and political dimensions of the Palestinian liberation struggle. This, uh, learning does not threaten us Jews. What threatens us is the false attribution of horrific human rights abuses to our faith and our people rather than to the political entity that is the State of Israel. Please protect students and teachers who are teaching and learning about Gaza. This may be uncomfortable, but our district has a proud legacy of dealing with the discomfort and getting through it.
Thank you. On the issue of school safety, I'm going to call Gary Wolf and Dan Smuts. That's okay. Are you Gary?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Uh, hi, my name is Gary Wolf. I'm a parent of a 10th grader at BHS, and I'm the chair of the BHS Safety Committee. Um, you're going to be hearing from our committee during the committee time, so I just want to briefly introduce myself. Uh, there has been a bit of a rocky road with the BHS school leadership, and tonight, the BHS leadership presented an alternate plan, not the plan that the Safety Committee has been working on, to the School Site Council. Unfortunately, they didn't notice that plan. It wasn't made available in advance. Um, and the bylaws require that the Safety Committee officers present the plan, that it's not actually a plan presented by the school administration. So we are going to challenge that plan as not properly noticed. So I just want to end by saying, it's a great group of people. It's a multi-stakeholder group. We've been working for 18 months, and, you know, as, even if it gets rocky, I think we can get forward together, and it's good to look at each other face-to-face and just, so you know where to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mina Sun and James Schultz.
Hi, board and superintendent. My name is Mina. My fifth grader, um, child Kai is blind and a proud member of the vibrant BUSD community. Over the past year, Kai has been an active team member of a weekly Go Ball practice organized by a local nonprofit organization board and taking place at the Berkeley Adult School Gym around the corner. Kai has thrived in this paralympic sport, showcasing bright, um, blind pride, building not just athletic skills, but confidence, a sense of belonging, or the positive thing coming out of being a part of a team sport. Um, unfortunately, sadly, this opportunity was brutally taken away on January 10th by an email from Berkeley Adult School administrators banning Kai from further practice, citing a vague state law. Since then, we have requested clarification on the alleged state law violation four times in writing. But to this day, no clarification has been provided.
Thank you very much for your comments. If you could send the rest of your comments to the board, that would be much appreciated. James Schultz?
Hello, board. My name is James Schultz. I have a child at Longfellow Middle School and a child at Berkeley High. I came earlier in the year to discuss the construction project at the school that had not yet started, but they'd closed multiple buildings. Those buildings remain closed. They were supposed to be given back the first week of February. We found out through SSC that they won't be given back until sometime in March. There's been no communication about what's going to change at the school to get anything open. I did notice that Sylvia Mendez's parents literally had to come here and scream to make it so that their voices would be heard before their construction project, and things have changed. Hopefully, at the next board meeting, we can have a larger showing and voice our concerns about this project. But now we've also lost half of the field, because the construction decided to open the field and the dirt just before it rains. So that will be gone for the rest of the year.
Thank you very much. If you could email us your comments, that would be appreciated. Next, we'll move on to comments, uh, virtual comments. And so, Ms. Tyrus, um, we're going to start with Lindsay Nofelt.
Hi, board members. Um, my name is Lindsay Nofelt, and I'm speaking as a parent of two children in Berkeley Schools and a member of Reading for Berkeley. I am here tonight to ask the Board of Education to demonstrate that literacy is important to you. So far, the past few months have shown us that it is not a top priority. Presentations have been delayed for months. Then, discussion by board members is curtailed. Reports are tucked away as informational items and progress toward the Literacy Action Plan are enveloped in larger items. are enveloped in larger items. We know that this work to get more of our students reading and writing is truly an imperative. Improving literacy outcomes is how we can finally make an impact for so many of our plans, including the African-American Success Framework, the Latinx Resolution, and CSSE's plans. The huge potential impact reinforces my point. This deserves public discussion by our Board leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Nofelt. If you could, please email us the rest of your comments. That'd be great. And next, we'll move on to Richard Prytowski.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry. I've got issues here. Okay, hi, I'm talking to you from Ohio, but I used to live in California, and I want to address a couple of things about ethnic studies. I'm a retired higher education professional, and this is a subject matter actually I dealt with for about 40 years. What I want to impress upon you is that there's a long and sad history to what used to be a noble project, and I want to make a recommendation since I have very limited time to talk to you. I recommend what has been left out for decades in this area of teaching and learning, and that is a real concentration on building alliances and cherishing viewpoint diversity. So for example, if you're going to talk about indigeneity, don't leave out the fact that Jews have indigenous roots in the Holy Land. If you're going to talk about race, don't just lump Jews as white. That's racist. There are many Jews of color. And welcome true, good-faith viewpoint diversity. That's what's been lacking in this project, and that's why I think we're seeing so many of the divisions that are showing up in these...
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, we have Mariki Mayeno, followed by Amiko Mayeno.
Hi, can you hear me?
It sounds a little low, but... Still sounds low.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Mariki Mayeno, and I graduated from Berkeley High School in 2018. The most valuable experience of my time in high school was my teachers who focused on ethnic studies, including an ethnic studies class and many learnings about the civil rights movement and environmental racism. In 2016, when Trump was elected, one of my biggest fears was the increase of anti-Muslim hate crimes. I feared for the safety of my Muslim classmates. I feel similarly right now for the safety of Palestinian Muslim and Arab students and faculty. With the rise of Islamophobia and Muslimphobia hate crimes across the nation, the classroom needs to be a place where teachers can educate about Palestine. In a world where mainstream media predominantly has a bias for the oppressor's story, the classroom needs to be a place where the true histories of marginalized people are taught. Students have the right to learn about the Israel-Hamas war that has killed over 25,000 Palestinian people. Silencing teachers on this topic protects state violence and jeopardizes the safety of our community. Being able to learn about Palestine in the U.S. is important.
Thank you very much for your comments. Now, we will move on. I see Mariki Mayeno, Kyla, and Itamar. Those are the three that I see. Listen. Do we have Kyla speaking next?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Kyla, and I'm a Jewish-American mom of three BUSD kids. I support teaching Liberated Ethnic Studies without exception. This includes reading banned books, teaching hard histories, including U.S. chattel slavery. In the same vein, students should learn about Palestine. Our country must stop basing education on the politics of fear and white supremacy. History should not be taught based on the emotions of the oppressors, but rather for the purpose of learning truths in order to form critical thinking skills. If our country is to be a true democracy, we must create opportunities for our citizens to receive an unbiased education. They must be taught history based on accurate events that really happened, including the Nakba. They must be taught history based on these events that include both sides, not just the side of the dominant, loud power. Education should not be driven by fear and by who yells the loudest, but by truth and exploration. Our collective liberation relies on it. I, a Jewish parent, support teaching Liberated Ethnic Studies without exception. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Itamar Lando, followed by, I think, Amiko. Her hand was up, and then it went down, but I see her hand up again. So I think we'll do Itamar and then Amiko, and then that will conclude public comment. Itamar? Okay, I see two more speakers then with their hands up, and then that will conclude the online comments. Amiko Mayeno and Lupe G. D. Sorry, you're on mute, Amiko.
Okay, hi. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so sorry. So I am the parent of Mariki Mayeno, who just spoke, and I'm also a parent of a current student who is a senior at Berkeley High and worked in the schools for over 12 years at Berkeley Unified School District. And I wanted to speak because I heard about what's going on around the liberated curriculum and the repression of that or the concerns around that, and I really wanted to raise my voice to say that I think it's really, really important that it continues and that students are allowed to learn about Palestine. This is a time when we need to be wrapping our arms around the Palestinian students, around the Palestinian, Arabic, Muslim faculty and students because of what is going on in Gaza. And it's a time when we need to support our community, and part of that support is allowing them to speak and have their voice about what is going on and to be able to protest what is going on and to be able to learn about what is going on. I grew up in a family with, I also had a Zionist mother, and I had to...
Thank you very much for your comments. If you did not get to finish them, please email them to the Board. We have Lupe G. D., and then my last online public comment will be Itamar Lando for this section of the meeting. We cannot hear you, Ms. Gallegos.
Good evening. My name is Lupe Gallegos Diaz, and I'm from the Latinos Unidos, the Berkeley, and I'm one of the co-chairs, and I wanted to, tonight, to talk about the continued inequities within the Latino community, and I'm here to support the comments around Liberated Ethnic Studies, but also to continue the vision of the 2020 vision of the inequities that we have for our students of color in particularly. And tonight, I do want to, again, applaud for the work that has been done on the various community initiatives, but particularly tonight, the Latino Resolution to continue to be inclusive and also access to the resources to both our students and our parents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Gallegos. Now, we have Itamar Lando. Chires, did you promote the speaker? I think you've been promoted. You may speak.
Hello? Hello. Thank you for taking my call. Yeah, my name is Itamar Landau. I'm speaking as a Berkeley resident, a Cal alum, a parent of two young girls, prospective future BUSD students, and also as an organizer of a very young Jewish organization called the Jewish Coalition of Berkeley with over 200 members in just the last month and a steering committee representing members of many, many of the synagogues in Berkeley, calling for education and not indoctrination. The school board needs to ensure that teachers can present controversial issues such as the Israel-Hamas war, but that they do so in a balanced, unbiased, and factually grounded manner. Secondly, I would say I personally am very much in favor of ethnic studies, and I pushed that back in my time in high school in the early 2000s, but it needs to represent also the perspective of the Jewish people, primarily, for one thing, our historical connection to the land of Israel. And the second thing, that antisemitism functions differently as a form of oppression. It's not simply about power versus powerlessness, but rather scapegoating Jews for whatever kind of power they have at any given time, and anti-Israel demonization is one form.
Thank you, Itamar. If you could, please email the Board your comments. That would be much appreciated. Now, that concludes the public comment period. Thank you to everyone who came to speak tonight. If you did not get to speak, please remember there's an extended public comment period at the end of the meeting. You can also email the Board at boardofed@berkeley.net or contact us individually. Individually, our information is on the website. Now, we will move on to committee comments. Ms. Chires, do we have any committee comments tonight? We do. All right. And which committee is this? Berkeley High Safety Committee? One second. Superintendent, that's not part of our, those aren't part of our official Board committees? Let me confirm. It's not one of the ones named on our agenda. However, we will let you speak. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Zoltara. I'm the parent of two BUSD students, and I'm here tonight to represent the Berkeley High Safety Committee along with our Chair, Gary Wolf. As you heard earlier, we are facing significant roadblocks, and we came to ask for your help and for your engagement. As background, the BHS Safety Committee is a standing subcommittee of the School Site Council, which is a standing committee of the BUSD Board. Our remit is to develop a comprehensive school safety plan, address safety issues at the school, collect and present data to the BHS community regarding safety. In other words, we exist at the direction of this school board and in service to the students, faculty, and community of the school. Just like you, we have a clear goal around keeping BHS safe and are investing time and significant energy into preparedness. Job number one for this group has been to develop a school safety plan. There may be some of you wondering, doesn't Berkeley High already have a safety plan? The answer technically is yes. Last year, the school approved a plan in an effort to be compliant with California Education Code Section 32281A. Functionally, however, I'm here to tell you that there is no safety plan for Berkeley High. The document approved last year is, at best, a Frankenstein'd copy-paste text dump of a lot of processes, procedures, and scenarios that are superfluous in many areas or relevant in others and inadequate in their omission of critical safety preparedness needs. Some of the text actually appears to have been copied from other schools without a filter for relevancy. For example, the current safety plan refers to the needs of kindergarteners. I think we all can agree that BHS is for grade 9 through 12 students. It also references a scenario where a plane may need to land urgently on campus, presumably taken from a school next to an airport. What it does not include are things like an earthquake plan, pretty necessary for a Bay Area school, a modernized plan for unlocking gates and doors should evacuation be necessary, a plan for clear and immediate communication with teachers, parents, students, faculty in the event of an emergency incident, a means to manage sexual assault by a student on campus, which we all know is a chronic issue at BHS. Most alarmingly, there is not a plan at BHS to deal with an active shooter. As one BH staff member said in our interview, "If there is a serious incident like a shooter, it's going to be total chaos. Nobody has a plan." I need to be crystal clear on this. The opportunity for improving the plan is great, but it is a lot of work. The job is big, and it's daunting, and the need is dire, and we are here to help. So where are we in the process? Since the appointment of our Safety Committee Subcommittee in October, this small but dedicated group has combed through the document. We've done interviews with people in the school of all different levels and job functions. We held a really great safety hearing. Many of you were there. We were so grateful to see you there, and we've had hundreds of public comment. We've been dedicated to a collaborative, community-focused process from the very beginning with a keen understanding that there is a need to listen, understand, and investigate before imposing any sort of real suggestions or requirements upon the school. We've now identified areas of inquiry thematically where sections were out of sync with BUSD policy. They were incomplete, or they were totally inadequate. And we've worked to restructure this document. There's a ton more to do to even get this to table stakes, let alone best-in-class. Unfortunately, as you heard earlier, there is a misalignment between our committee and the BHS administrators. We had a sneaking suspicion that they were hoping that maybe we would put a rubber stamp on this plan and do some cosmetic cleanup. But tonight, at the School Site Meeting, that was codified, that very dire concern, when not only was our work misrepresented, but they stopped our committee chair from even speaking at the meeting. In our opinion, a cosmetic facelift of this plan would be malpractice, and it's not what this group is determined to do. It would also violate our bylaws, the Board mandate, and the Ed Code. Moreover, it would open up the school district to myriad legal liabilities and would be a total neglect of duty of care for our students. Thankfully, our bylaws ask that the school board intervene in a situation like this, and that's what we're asking you to do. We have three clear requests. Number one, please put district and board representation on our committee. Specifically, we need someone for facilities and the Title IX office. We'd like, if I could have just a minute?
And your time is up, but if you could, please email the Board of Directors your comments.
We will, and thank you. We appreciate your engagement.
Thank you. We could move on to union comments. Ms. Chires, are there any union comments tonight? BFT, just a moment. And not here comments.
Hello, Berkeley Unified School Board and Superintendent Ford Murthell. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Tonight, you will hear from the district on the projected state funding for the 2024-2025 school year. There is a significant reduction between the projected amount of funding when developing this year's budget and the actual amount being proposed now. This means that the district will be undergoing budget cuts, as they have multiple times in the last decade. Budget cut conversations are much more difficult than the conversations we have been having recently. Instead of deciding what district priorities will receive new funding, the district has to decide what will be reduced. I want to remind the Board that in order to serve our students, we must have qualified educators and keep them. This recruitment and retention is critical to maintaining the success of our schools. Our compensation is still near the bottom of the county. We will provide exact numbers on how near the bottom we are in the next couple of months. Our healthcare rates just went up 11%. I am paying $1,683 more this year than I did last year. This is a significant mid-year pay cut for me. Not only are our salaries not keeping up with our neighbors, we are paying more out-of-pocket for our health insurance, and this will occur again next year. With our neighboring districts continuing to cover the complete cost of healthcare and provide salary increases that outpaces our own, BUSD will lose out on the already diminished labor pool for educators. Currently, we have 16 teachers in various subjects teaching without preliminary or clear credentials. Although these teachers are doing their best, they have not completed their teacher training programs. We also have educators who we have hired through private companies that are not even BUSD employees because we cannot find anyone, even those without proper credentials, to teach in certain subject areas. to teach in certain subject areas. Prior to the pandemic, hiring someone without proper credentials in our district was rare. This goes back to my original point. The USD will need to prioritize its spending and as a district, we'll need to make sure that maintaining our talent is one of the top priorities. Without that, none of our future aspirations and plans will even matter. On a separate note, we wanted to invite the community to participate in supporting Measure H, the renewal of BSEP. This measure makes up 20% of the district budget and provides for much of the programming that makes our district exceptional. Our educators and parents precinct walk every Saturday and Sunday. Contact your local PTA to see how you can be involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And is that it for?
Yes, unless there's any other person here present for a committee, for union comments? That's it?
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Chires, and thanks to everyone again who came to speak. We'll now hear from our board of directors. Before we start our board member comments tonight, I'd like to remind our colleagues to review our governance team agreements. Just like we, we have decorum expectations from the public, we also have governance team commitments for the board of directors and they're available at the back of our agendas. And with that, directors, who would like to go first? Director Cheng.
Thank you so much. Good evening and thank you, everybody, for all of your comments and reminders. I know that you come here with your hearts and minds and that is much appreciated. As the superintendent raised, this month is disability awareness and history month. January 21st also marks the 50th anniversary of the groundbreaking Lau v Nichols Supreme Court case. This, therefore, is an important opportunity to consider how as a community, we share common experiences that we can all draw upon to build community, even as we disagree. Intersectionality across language access and disability rights in particular reflect how civil rights was driven by a recognition of shared experiences. So are we, are we ready for some law learning? So exciting for you? Little bit, just, just a minute maybe? So what exactly is Lau v Nichols? This 1974 U.S. Supreme Court case emerged as a result of advocacy by founding faculty of Cal's Ethnic Studies and Asian American Studies programs. They organized San Francisco Chinatown parents to push to provide English learners in public schools with equitable access to district programs and services. I'm old enough to remember a time when if you came here as an immigrant and you did not speak English, it was a routine practice to hold you back for a year. A number of my friends and family experienced that. I personally did not. So Lau v Nichols held that Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which many of you heard, has heard me speak about here, and the 14th Amendment extends protections for English learners and their parents and guardians, also called limited English proficient persons, the right of protections to equitable access to these programs and services. The consequence of this is that instead of English learner students being held back, push-in and pull-out accommodations, as well as interpretation and translation are required. The same principle to treat a person differently in order to provide them with equitable access grounds disability rights under the Rehabilitation Act of 1974 and later the Americans with Disabilities Act. This was actually a major innovation in civil rights law. This concept that in order to ensure that someone can access programs and services equitably, they actually have to be treated differently. Many of you are aware of Section 504 accommodations, IEP plans as well. This is where this comes from. These laws, one for mostly immigrant students and families across a diversity of national origin, and the other for individuals with disabilities who also, as you all know, come from a diversity of backgrounds, share this common experience and intersectionality. So I don't have much to report otherwise. I do want to thank all the folks who have been emailing and checking with me. Although my, my BUSD bio does not have specified office hours, you can email me and I've had many, many Zoom meetings and otherwise coffee chats with folks as well and you can do so. So that's how to grab me for office hours. Thanks again and appreciate everybody coming out again and speaking their hearts and minds.
Thank you, Director Cheng. Any other colleagues who would like to give comments tonight?
Well, I don't have much to say, but I do want to give a couple like dates and reminders. So first of all, January 31st is the first BHS Wellness Center Parent Info Night. So they're going to be doing kind of like a workshop in partnership with, I think, the Nairobi Institute, so more about like meditation and stuff like that. And then February 1st is the Student Spring Club Fair. It's always a really great chance for students to get involved. So if you'd like your student to get involved, meet some new people, I'd encourage them to go. Usually we go with classes, so yeah. And then the last really important thing is that the CCC, our College and Career Center, is hosting FAFSA workshops for parents, so parents and students. So the first one is on our open house night, which is February 8th, so parents will already be there, so it's really convenient. It's going to be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then the second one is from on Saturday, February 10th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. So these times are more convenient for parents. So if you need help with FAFSA or any financial aid, our college counselors will be there to help. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Student Director and Director Babbitt.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. I do have some announcements as well as some committee updates to give to my board colleagues. I want to start by thanking all of the staff and the parents who've been attending our strategic planning and LCAP update meetings. It was a pleasure to be in community, thinking strategically with everyone about how BUSD's mission statement and 4E's can become true for all students, families, and educators. So again, thank you to all of the staff for that hard work and for all of you for giving of your time to come out. I also want to acknowledge that one of the main concerns that arose when I attended a meeting was that we need to ensure that there's more student voice. And so I want to thank staff for receiving that feedback and for also being intentional on how we're going to more directly engage our students in the strategic planning process. I'm also grateful that at that community meeting at Berkeley High, at Berkeley Adult School, it gave me time to see our EMT, Emergency Medical Team CTE program in action. It was great to see our alumni and our current students in deep engagement, exploring this career path. For a few of my announcements, the city of Berkeley is hosting a Black History competition for students and students can electronically enter their submission in the categories of visual art, oral tradition, music, literature, historical exhibit, and dance. So there are nine chances to win prizes from $250 to $400. The theme is Black History, which covers a wide array of culture and accomplishments. So if your students, club, or other organizations have already prepared presentations on the subject, let's go citywide. It's time to submit those submissions by February 9th and the finalists will have to compete in a live performance on February 17th. The email for more information and to submit your submissions is berkeleyblackhistory@gmail.com. Once again, that's berkeleyblackhistory@gmail.com. BUSD is still hosting its Black History Oratorical Fest, which is scheduled for the end of March. So please reach out to your schools to make sure that you get that information and that your student in your school is participating as well. And then ARIA is having on February 3rd its 15th Annual Professional Development Summit and the theme is Building Brilliance and Building Bridges. To our staff who are watching, 40 professional development seats have been included in our African-American Success Framework budget. So please reach out to our African-American Success Manager, Kamara O'Gwyn, for your seat to attend. Last announcement, we have a creative multimedia production agency that is curating a production to be inspirational, motivational, and aspirational, featuring our superintendent, featuring Director Brown, and also featuring me. So if any of you all would like to see that movie screening, please reach out to me at laurbabbitt@berkeley.net, 1B2Ts, and I'd love to invite you to this movie screening on February 2nd. I haven't seen it, so I'm really putting myself out there by inviting you all, but I do appreciate the acknowledgement of our hard work. Lastly, for our PAC, for my committee updates, I did attend the PAC meeting, which was followed by, or not followed, but before that meeting, there was a district-wide kind of budget Zoom call for all of the parents and all those on those parent committees. So you guys really pay attention to our district website because I thought parents found that to be very informational, to really learn about that, our $3.3 million shortfall in revenue that we are expecting, and they got to ask some real-time questions and get some real-time feedback. That was followed by the PAC committee meeting. And so as my committee update, what the Parent Advisory Committee does, for those of you who don't know, is they give comments around our LCAP supplemental funding. And then our district is required to respond to those comments. And so I really want to give a shout out that not only do we respond this past year, but we're also giving updates around where we are in kind of those, those commitments and workings that we were going to do to address their concerns. So I will try and I will ask the superintendent to share that update with the board committee, with the board, so that you all can see where our, so we could also be a part of this progress monitoring. I want to thank the PAC committee for setting up this structure because often we get comments back, but then we don't see the progress. And so they've really built in a time. I do want to say that, you know, there, there was clear that some of the comments, you could tell where those directors were very engaged in, in addressing the concerns and there were other comments and feedback that was just a link to a website. And so we are expecting to have a more detailed response because even when you go to the link to the website, it doesn't really answer their question or their concerns. So, you know, the, the things that they're addressing are issues that supplemental fund is spending a large amount of money on as well. So we really need to be vigilant around how we respond to those concerns and make sure that our dollars are making sense. Lastly, I want to also congratulate Student Director Janai. This is why the superintendent likes to go first, so she could just like say these things before we get a chance to say them, but it was, it was an honor to know that he is, he has graduated early and we also do want to thank him for his service on the board. And BTA is currently in the process of replacing their student representative, so we're looking forward to that seat not being empty for too long. So you'll get somebody. And then lastly, I do still strongly support our controversial policy and I want to direct everyone's attention to the berkeley.net website. Under Family Resources, there is a, an entire website page around BUSD's response to teaching on controversial policies. I am asking the superintendent to build that out even further because it's very clear that we still have some strong differences of opinion on what free speech is versus speech in a public classroom setting. And we do want to make sure that we make a welcoming school environment true for all students. So thank you all for directing your attention to that and you will be hearing more from, from us as a district around that specific initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Shonaski.
I should have gone before you. I should have known. I don't have a lot to say. I would like to publicly congratulate Janai as well. It's really exciting and we will miss him, but we're glad that he's on to bigger and better things. I want to also thank City Council, Berkeley City Council, for helping to secure parking permits for the Berkeley High staff, teachers, administrators, and then classified staff. This will help us to put dollars towards educational spaces rather than parking spaces. I also had the pleasure of joining BCCE for one of their general meetings and got to meet a number of classified staff that I've never met before, so that was a real privilege. And I got to talk to our very own former director, Ty Alper's son, about our board policies. So that was a pleasure this last week. And then I've been really busy going to a number of PTA meetings and talking with folks about some of the important programs that we have here in BUSD. So it's been really nice to be on different school sites and meeting some just different families, different parents than we normally get to engage with. That's it. Thanks.
Well, thank you. And I see Vice President Brown has her hand raised. Can, can we just make her a panelist for the, for the meeting? Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Can you see me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. It is a joy to see you all on the virtual side and unfortunately, I can't be there with you all in person, but thank you so much for taking the opportunity to come to our school board meeting and as always, speak on behalf of your students and even on behalf of yourself as a student in Berkeley Unified School District and really encourage us to serve our school, serve our students and our schools better. So thank you all for taking the time to be here. I have a couple of thank yous and a couple of comments. I had the opportunity to spend time this week in supporting a lot of efforts that support our schools and support our students, from supporting measures to engaging in other events and conversations around our district. It has been great to see all of the ways that we have been in alignment as a city. And speaking of our city, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our city council and the mayor for the work that they did to ensure that we support our teachers with parking. In addition to that, I'd like to thank President, excuse me, President Emeritus and Director Laura Babbitt for her work on this effort. I remember a time when we first began to talk about this as a school board alongside Director John Kalis and it was really your advocacy and your push and the work of the Two by Two Committee that helped to move this forward. So thank you so much for your advocacy. Thank you to the Two by Two and all of those who represented our school district and the city council on that committee during that time. In addition, I'd like to address comments that we have been hearing for weeks and weeks and weeks. And we've heard those comments and had some internal conversations, but I think that we as a district need to move forward withholding space to have a larger conversation. And I would like to recommend to my colleagues and to my superintendent, to all of us on the governance team, that we really consider an opportunity for Town Hall Forum that addresses ethnic studies, liberated ethnic studies addresses, and give space for folks to address how the impacts of the war continuing to show up in our, our community. I think that providing space during our public comment is, is definitely okay, but I think that there should be a larger platform so that we can talk about these, these challenges and so that we can demystify some things that may be untruths and also partake in a truth-telling conversation. And so I'd make that recommendation and encourage my colleagues and the superintendent to please share your thoughts on that, either publicly or offline. I'm really excited about tonight's agenda and although I'm not there with you in person, know that I am there in spirit, but I'm happy that we are going to be discussing our Latinx success resolution. Our board, time and time again, talks about being an equitable board and it is through the work of these resolutions and our, on behalf of our students and alongside our district staff, that we actually can make these promises true to our students. And so I'm excited about the conversation and want to thank President Vasu Dev for her work on the Latinx resolution. for her work on the Latinx resolution that brought this work forward. In addition to that, tonight, we will have a discussion about the governor's budget update. And I know that this will be a heavy conversation, especially knowing that there has been a dramatic reduction in the COLA, given the comments that were made earlier by Matt Meyer and the comments that will be continued to be made by our teachers and our staff in BUSD. I am worried about, you know, the cost of living stipend and the way, in the cost of living adjustment and the ways in which it will affect our staff in the future. And so if I don't get the opportunity to speak on that actual item, I do want to encourage our staff and encourage us as a board to think about further advocacy on the state level. Because all school districts, this is something that is not just going to impact Berkeley, but this is something that's going to impact many school districts. And so it will definitely take a joint effort to ensure that we are fighting for a fully funded equitable education for our students and one that includes a cost of living adjustment that is meaningful for our faculty and staff so that they can do the work that they do on a daily basis. I thank you for the opportunity to provide these comments tonight. And Director Babett, or President Basudev, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. And I hope you can stay on as a panelist. Don't disappear into the audience.
I will. I will do my best to stay as long as I can. Thank you.
No worries. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'll keep my comments brief because all of my colleagues spoke so eloquently tonight. It's nice to go very last. You don't have to speak that much. But really quickly, I'm also excited about the updates tonight on both the Latinx resolution and to hear the update on the budget, which is crucial this year, or as, you know, President Meyer said, we're going to be put in a position that I haven't been put in since I've been elected to this board. And so, you know, having those very difficult conversations and I think putting us in the mindset of what the decisions that are going to come later in the spring is really important. So thank you to the staff for preparing those two presentations tonight. I also want to thank all our speakers that came tonight. You know, time and time again, I keep hearing this various concerns around safety issues. And one of the things that we did, that the district did do, and I want to thank our superintendent and facilities director, is that we do have now a safety committee as part of our official committees on the board. And so that, I know that people have been speaking about that. And that's a way to really elevate safety issues within the district. And I know Superintendent and Director Kalis will have more information forthcoming. We did hire staff, dedicated staff at the district level. We passed a safety resolution. And I want to thank my vice president, my Vice President Brown, for being, you know, collaborator on that resolution. And so, you know, there's a lot that we have done. And I know that change is incremental and it's slow. But I want to thank you for coming. And I do encourage everyone who cares about this issue to continue to write to us, to the board, because there is room for improvement. But I know that we've been intentional over the last year in putting resources in place to improve on safety. I also want to flag that tomorrow, there's a Spanish-language mental health clinic in collaboration with Latinos Unidos at Berkeley at Thousand Oaks and the district. And we'll have a Spanish-speaking counselor there who will talk about how to manage stress in our families. And so please be sure, you know, I haven't seen much information from any of my principals, but I hope the information's going out. I would love to make sure that the community knows about that. Y quería agradecerle a todas las personas que vinieron hoy esta noche a dar sus comentarios públicos. Solo le quería hacer saber al público que mañana hay un taller especial en la escuela de Thousand Oaks de cinco y media, siete y media, con una consejera Ana Olivera Slavenson, que se va a enfocar sobre cómo manejar el estrés familiar. Espero que esa información sea compartida con todas nuestras escuelas porque yo sé que hubieron otros talleres con nuestras familias en las escuelas Silvia Méndez and Longfellow donde hablaron del impacto del estrés familiar. Entonces me gustaría que esa información se compartiera y que invitaramos a muchas de nuestras familias, especialmente nuestras familias que hablan español. I will have my office hours posted by the end of the week. So please look, look for these. And I look forward to engaging with the public always. You can always email me too. And I'm happy to hop on a Zoom. And that concludes my comments for tonight. And now I would love to move on to our consent calendar. Can I have a motion, colleagues, and a second to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Brown, seconded. I was taken. Seconded by Director Babett. Ms. Chires, I think for this one also you have to call the roll because we have an electronic vote. All right, please call the roll.
Director Shonaski?
Yes.
Director Lial?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Presidenta Basudev?
Yes. Thank you. And now we will move on to our first discussion item. So while the team sets up Superintendent and Associate Superintendent, will you be formally introducing this item?
I don't think a formal introduction is necessary, except to say that I, like you all, are super excited and proud of the work that we've done to date to really accelerate and make moves to better and differently support our Latinx students using the Latinx resolution as a vehicle to do that. And so the team will be presenting to you all some of the things that we've done to date, as well as some data. And what we plan to do as we continue this work.
The anticipation.
Yeah. We're waiting for the drum roll for the slide deck. But I can, I can go ahead and get started in the interest of time. Does that work, Ms. Chires? But I do want to see everybody see the second slide because they've got some cute pictures on there.
All right, thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, members of the public. We're excited to be here this evening to share with you an update about our Latinx success resolution. I do want to introduce our team, who is with us here today, and will be doing the bulk of the presentation. So Ms. Lydia Gabri, I'm going to look at again. Gabri Heewo, you and I both have one of those names. So I appreciate, I appreciate, I'm going to keep learning that one. Who is the supervisor for our OFI team. We're really excited that Ms. Duñez has joined us this evening. She is our Berkeley High Puente teacher, Alejandro Frias, who is one of our OFI specialists here. And then Dr. Matthew Espinoza Castro, who is our director for the Equity Achievement and Belonging Department. We have a couple of objectives to attend to today. And I'm going to turn that over to the team.
Next slide.
All right. Well, today is an opportunity to report out on progress, which is actually part of our Latinx resolution. We're going to look at some data that's driving this work specifically on literacy, talk about some of the implementation of specific Latinx resolution items. And in particular, get a perspective from our Berkeley High School Puente program. And we're excited about that. But also, it serves to preview some opportunities for the spring. And we hope to come back at the end of the school year to continue that process. Part of our mission is to enable and inspire a diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And we know that that requires connections and engagement with our families as well as direct service to our students. And that's certainly at the root of our work, specifically with our Latinx students in this case. That kind of led to a discussion of like, how do we frame the work that we're doing? Because there's a big umbrella of family and student engagement and services that are, we're engaged in. And this year, we looked to name our Latinx Latina success initiative under the umbrella of adelante. And we chose that because it means so much in Spanish. It carries this meaning of forward movement and progress, which is certainly important. But it also is a way to say like, step up and, you know, and focus, you know, and get attention on this work, which is all part of our goals and mission. And under that umbrella, we recognize that there are three core goals that we pulled out of the Latinx resolution. One is to provide a focus on Latinx culture, history, and language and affirming those pieces. And we call that si soy, inspired by the si se puede call to action. Si soy means yes, I am, and affirming identities is part of the goal. Also, we seek to empower our students and our families to be successful and build up the capacity. It's not something we can give them, it's something that we can build and instill. And so that empowerment and capacity building work is under the banner of si puedo, or yes, I can. And then finally, we certainly have a strong college and career readiness aspect of the program. And we have that under the banner of si boy, or yes, I'm going. In 2021, June 2021, our board, under the leadership of many of the folks here, helped to draft a Latinx resolution that called for particular attention and support of the success of our Latinx students in particular. The, oops, on the next slide. We've, we can, we've kind of unpacked what, some of the key factors that are in that Latinx resolution. You can see around the outside there. In particular, today, we want to talk about some of the work that's being done and will continue to be done this year around improving family engagement. Also, understanding equity gaps through looking at data and talking and connecting with the community, continuously reporting out on progress. And then specifically, the Puente Program as an example of designing culturally linguistically responsive instruction. To ground this work and to continue to motivate us and recognize why there is a need for a Latinx resolution and a need for particular attention. We call, we've been refining over the last year, in particular, as we've gotten new tools and become more focused on benchmark monitoring and not reliant solely on the end-of-year state assessments. It's helped us to uncover the reason why, where there are some achievement gap opportunities. And in particular, we're looking at the literacy level data. This is stuff that we've been sharing with our community and unpacking and part of the strategic planning and LCAP community engagement work. This piece of data is a new way that we're looking at our data through the cohort lens. Instead of comparing year-to-year data, we're looking, that each of those graphs show one group of cohorts, so one group of students. So the first, the top level are all of our second, current second graders. And it goes back from when they were kindergarten and where they entered and shows the amount of progress or proficiency in literacy based on our DIBELS assessment over time through second grade. What you can see, for example, in the second-grade group is that when we look at our Hispanic Latinx students compared to the overall student population, more of our Hispanic Latinx students entered at the very beginning of kindergarten without demonstrating proficiency in reading and English, which is not to be unexpected, right? Through instruction, though, you can see that numbers, those numbers dipping over time and expanding, moving more and more students into the blue and the green area of proficiency by second grade. So you can see there's still work to be done because there is a gap compared to the overall numbers. But we are seeing more progress with that foundational group. Now, our focus has been on foundational literacy. And so it's great that we're seeing that playing out in the primary grades. The difference or the impact with the fifth-grade students, meaning from third grade to the currently being fifth grade, we don't see the same marked difference. We're not seeing backwards momentum, which is good because, keep in mind, every cut point is actually a higher expectation, right? So it's not the same test every year. They are increasing in rigor over time. So even maintaining that means that there is growth happening by maintaining the current level. But we're not seeing the acceleration or shift that we might hope to see. In seventh grade, our seventh-grade student group, where we see just from sixth grade to seventh grade, there's a marked difference for our Hispanic Latinx students that calls out a need for a focus with what's happening from sixth grade into seventh grade. More students moving away from the above proficiency level to proficient or at standard. However, it's pretty stagnant on, in terms of those that are under proficiency or below proficiency level. And then the final, oops, sorry. Okay, no problem. And so the last thing is that we are, began using a benchmark assessment for eighth and ninth graders called the NWEA. We don't have as many cut points to really show trajectory. But now, part of our work of monitoring progress and looking at equity gaps will be to monitor that piece as well. Especially the more that we can get those metrics in our high school, which where there are a lot fewer benchmark score data, that's certainly a focus. So that certainly keeps a case, puts a case together for why we need this Latinx resolution and a particular focus under adelante of Latinx success. Now we'll share a few of the highlights or things that we were working on in the fall. And then we'll preview some things that are coming up in the spring.
So one of the changes that has been made is an amendment to the Latinx resolution, which was approved by our board, you all, several months ago. The amendment focuses on making sure that there are Spanish-speaking family engagement specialists at BUSD schools that have at least a 15% population that speaks Spanish or schools that have either the TWI program or a newcomer program. And this is how it's played out so far. As you can see, we have Spanish-speaking family engagement specialists at almost all schools that have 15% Spanish-speaking population or TWI or newcomer programs. And we are currently working on getting a Spanish-speaking family engagement supervisor, sorry, specialist or Longfellow. And here are some of our highlights for, from the fall. There are pictures and flyers from some of the events and workshops that we've hosted or participated in. We've partnered with Daybreak Health to provide some mental health webinars in both English and Spanish. And we had a couple of sessions in the fall focused on Mental Health 101. We also held workshops for middle school families that focus on a book titled Middle School Matters. These workshops have been in English with Spanish interpretation available. And I will pass it to Alejandra to highlight a couple of the other events that we had in the fall.
We have also had a How to Become a Parent Champion workshop. And this was very much intentional and dedicated to a lot of our newcomer families, as we have had many come in since last year. And this was also organized by our Leadership Parent Group, which is under a grant that I have to build the capacity of parent leaders and to continue that and build a foundation for that. So we're definitely putting families onto the table as to what they would like to see. And then we also had Un Paso al éxito, which was a collaboration with Berkeley Community College on how community college works and the resources that they have there. And lastly, a networking event for all Latino families in collaboration with Latinos Unidos at Berkeley. We had a lot of community members that were Latinos from different organizations so that parents can meet them and get support from them as well from here in Berkeley.
So our Latinos Unidos at Berkeley collaboration continues to support in partnership with our Family Engagement and Equity Office, a grant that's brought in additional opportunities throughout the year. So that's part, that's now being woven under this broader umbrella. The work that we did last year with the listening sessions called out these four areas from our Latinx families. And you can see those reflected in our banners of And you can see those reflected in our banners of si puedo and si boy around building empowerment and engagement and advocacy, as well as a focus on college going supports. All right. And then the other piece that we wanted to update is around our Puente Program. So this year we've begun to build out regular collaboration and alignment work across both Longfellow's program and Berkeley High School. One of the teachers, there are two teachers at Berkeley High School is with us today to share that. And when we come back for the next report, we'll bring someone from Longfellow. So Berkeley High has a set of at least 39 students. The majority are Latinx, 13% are current English learners, 23% are reclassified. More than 20% also have IEPs. And then there's some overlap. So one of the things that we're tracking also with our programming is how many students are participating in multiple programs. So we have one of the students that's part of College Bound, one of the students that's also in the Bridge Program and four that are participating in Rise as well as Puente. To talk more about the reality of what that looks like, I'll hand it over to Sochi Duñez.
Can I stand? Does that work? Let me see. Can you hear me okay? Or is that, no, not good. Okay, let's see if I can do this. How's this? Better? Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sochi Duñez. I also go by Sochi Duñez and I am a second year teacher at Berkeley High School and a fifth year teacher total. I just want to start by saying, these are my kids. And it is really, really cool to see. I showed them this exact slide today and they're like, no, 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 don't show that, don't show that. I'm really excited to be here to talk about this program. I previously worked at Pittsburgh High School and was very familiar with the Puente Program that they have established there. When I came to Berkeley Unified, I was excited to be asked to start and kind of be the teacher for the first cohort, class of 2025. Last year, we started our journey together in AC World Literature for Puente. Puente does live in AC, which I'll just note Puente, there's a need and it's a family. And there are so many kids at Berkeley High that could benefit from something like this. On the right hand side, you'll see here that we have our current, well, the same kids a year older, my puentistas who are engaging in the curriculum at AP Language and Composition. Just to kind of ground us in what is the mission of Puente? It's, the mission is to send our kids to four-year universities to increase the number of underrepresented students that go to four-year universities, graduate from college, not just go, but graduate and then return as community leaders. As far as, so that's my cohort. This is the other cohort, cohort number two, class of 2026. I should also say I partner with BHS College and Career Counselor, Ms. Yasmin Navarro and English Teacher Leo Kowalski. This is his cohort of sophomores, class of 2026. Just some really exciting things that I just want to highlight. In the fall, our puentistas in the sophomore cohort went to UC Berkeley's Puente Northern California Regional Conference and they had a blast. They danced, they sung, they participated in workshops. And last year, we did the same thing with my class at UC Davis. In the spring, we're looking to take another college trip and also maybe even explore a place called The Crucible in Oakland. It's an art school that teaches kids and, and adults how to weld, how to glass blow, how to woodwork. And so education in all the ways, right? And exposing our students to these things. Also getting our cohorts together and building this. I think one thing I'd like to highlight is that, of course, this starts out as an adult sort of initiative, right? We're sitting here and we're talking about why we have these things adelante. Why do we have this? In Puente, the mission of that aligns perfectly with it. I was excited about it, like I said, I work with my partners about with, you know, for this program. But I think the magical part of all of this has seen, has been seeing my students own this and calling themselves puentistas. And I don't know if there's one slide, maybe before, after. Here we go. So on the left, you see us coming back from UC Santa Cruz and going to the boardwalk. On the right hand side, you have our puentistas who are juniors engaging at the spring, or excuse me, Fall Club Fair. And this is where I was, I could cry. I mean, I don't have kids of my own, but it was like, wow, like being out there and, and sharing with the community what Puente is because it's, not everyone's in it, right? We have two cohorts. However, we know and the kids know that the services that Puente provides, the love and the nurturing is something that all students at Berkeley High could use. And so the goal and the mission of this club is to sort of further extend these services to, to everyone. And so I'm, I'm very proud. I think you can probably see that. And what else did I want to say? I probably am running out of time here. There we go. Thank you. That's what I wanted to say. What's coming up for Puente at BHS? We are working to plan, of course, and build, build out further these parent connections. We have the lovely pleasure of getting to know our families very well. But actually, next week, our puentistas are hosting a college knowledge event in the CCC for the wider BHS community, sophomores and juniors getting together and having a community builder day, community service events, spring field trips, like I mentioned earlier. Puente Club hosting further events and bi-monthly meetings. And then Puente Grad for our first cohort will be graduating next year, which is really, really exciting. And I, I know I'm forgetting something, but I'll leave it at that, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's critical to know that the core elements are responsive English classes. And so both Longfellow and Berkeley High have an English class that's dedicated to Puente along with a dedicated counseling staff. And then opportunities for leadership and service in the community are the core elements of that. Sure.
I tried to get my students to make a video, like a short video to just talk about a little bit about the program. They were feeling a little shy, they didn't want to do it. So I collected some responses and I just wanted to say that overwhelmingly the feedback has been that Puente has been a home away from home for these students. It truly is a community and we often will joke about on our first field trip to UC Davis, we're coming back and Ms. Navarro and I are sitting in the front and we hear one of our students say, is this what community feels like? And oh my God, we start dying, right? But it's the community, it's the familia. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity.
All right. And so as we wrap up, we wanted to preview just a few upcoming opportunities and events. The rollout of this work has been challenging in many ways, both because we're navigating many different initiatives and programs, trying to allocate and align resources has been a major effort, as well as just building raíces or roots of the programs to really let them thrive in the long run. And so we're still at a nascent phase in a lot of this work, but things are coming together, which is really exciting. And we're starting to build momentum and recognizing, you know, the more we can outreach and the more that we can coordinate as well and organize all the different things that are happening across those pieces under one umbrella, like of adelante, instead of having a bunch of different separate initiatives, recognizing that Puente is a part of that and that our collaboration with Latinos Unidos at Berkeley is a part of that and all these family engagement, all these pieces go together. That's really exciting. And so one of the things that we're looking forward to is a revamping of our website as a home base for all of the information. And now that we've collected some of the things that I'll share with you and a whole bunch of dates, we're able to promote them as a group instead of trying to promote every single individual item on its own. But I do want to share, you know, some of these individual items. So under the si soy umbrella of celebrating Latinx culture, history and language, we do have a separate resolution calling for commemoration of the Dolores Huerta Cesar Chavez, Larry Atliang commemorative period focused on the farm workers movement. And so there's actually several things that we have coming up in partnership with some of our community folks. We, CABE will be kicking off this period with a immigrant rights workshop for our communities focused on sharing out to the, to everyone. So we all can know and advocate on behalf of our immigrants, especially on those that are undocumented, what their rights and opportunities are and resources for them in our communities. We have field trips, lesson plans that are being developed that'll be rolled out at the high school. We have a webinar focused on teatro and the role that arts played in the farm workers movement. We'll be featuring a film, a screening of the film Dolores and hosting that for our community. And then sending family and students to UC Davis on March 16th for the UC Davis Cesar Chavez Youth Leadership Conference, which we're excited to do. And then Lydia, do you want to share some of the si puedo opportunities coming up?
Yes, so we have some virtual, or virtual multilingualism and CILA bilinguality workshop coming up in the spring for families to learn more about students' opportunities and options to, for the path, related to the pathway for the bilingual program from elementary through high school. And we've been working with Kathleen Marte from the Curriculum and Instruction Team to organize this and it's scheduled for February 28th. We have the Daybreak Health webinars that I mentioned earlier that are also continuing into the spring. We have our next banner session on February 1st focused on understanding changes in your child's behavior with several more planned to be held throughout the semester. And we are also continuing our Middle School Matters series. We've hosted one at Longfellow and one at King and our next session will be held at Willard at the end of, at the end of February. And I'll hand it over to Alejandra.
We are also currently continuing our CABE leadership trainings for our parents who are already leaders in the community through D-LAC and E-LAC and other spaces, but really trying to become facilitators in, in our own community and trying to encourage more families to take initiative and take important roles where they make decisions for our students' success. And we also have a Supporting Literacy at Home, which is going to be a book program. At the end of this year, we're going to try to provide books for our families so that as a family, they can read together that are bilingual and also bring in Berkeley, or actually our own district-wide librarians to help us support that. And also the Berkeley Public Library to support families in getting library cards and encouraging them to go to the library throughout the summer. And then we also have a Resource Fair and Community Network event. Again, we have a lot of our Latino families who love to have convivios, come together and just talk it up with a whole bunch of Latino people that work in the area to get a better understanding of the resources that there are, not only in the district, but in the community.
And just a big shout out to Alejandra, who has been our anchor as our district office, Family Engagement and Equity Specialist and has been really leading a lot of this work as well as coordinating that those, every Tuesday and Thursday, multi-hour-long project to inspire parent engagement and leadership work with at least 12 parent leaders that are fully dedicated. And part of the vision and mission is to, we're cultivating that leadership to then continue to bring and inspire. So those families will be involved in leading and supporting some of the other things that will happen later in the semester. So that's the, is part of the shift. And then finally, and under the si boy, college readiness and career readiness, we have partnership with the EAOP staff from UC Berkeley that are also leading work at, at our high school. We're working on a CT pathways in Espanol specific events and previewing and tying that into some of our transition fairs and work. We'll be showcasing Puente both at the Berkeley High School Open House, but also a virtual showcase so families from across the district can get to know and start to look forward to the Puente Program. We're organizing some Latinx college students that, that will be coming and leading a panel, not just, not just to speak to students, although that's part of it, but mostly to speak to our Latino families and parents and assure them it's okay to let your kids go away to college and hear some things to know. And then we'll, we're partnering with our, the Berkeley Public Schools Fund and their Maker Camp over the summer to really Latinafy, you know, our, the experience for our students over the summer. And with that, we'll close out. I really want to give shout out to the full team and community that we have presenting today. And I'll hand it over to you all for questions.
Thank you so much. And I know the presentation took a little bit longer than I had estimated. So Ms. Tyres, can we add like 10 more minutes so that my colleagues can ask some questions? But great, great presentation. Thank you so much. I just want to make sure that, and then I'll start with Director Shnaski.
I just have one question. Well, first, thank you for all the work that you've done and highlighting the students and all of the work that you're doing directly with students is really great to see and families. I get really interested in the data and I'm wondering if we can go back to that data slide. I was just interested in some of those dips and valleys that you see in the data and if we understand why those exist and, and have any opportunity for intervention programs that sort of target whatever's happening there. And maybe we don't know. I, it just was interesting to me and it was pretty consistent.
Yeah, we're, there's, there's two main factors that, that are contributing that we anticipate are typical and contributing to that. One is the summer break that can then lead to a dip. And then one is that the end of the year, from mid-year to end, end of year, there is often a dip because the rigor raises significantly by the end of the grade level. So you're really, that's the, the real cut point is the end of the year of how close they are to the, to what they were supposed to learn in that grade level. So those two big shifts and the loss of opportunities over the summer and then like the increasing rigor over the school year are things that are pretty natural. So we're looking for trend lines over time to really see if there, we're making that progress. And as Alejandra mentioned, like there are some initiatives for summer learning and summer reading activities and things like that, that we're preparing for to try to offset some of that summer learning loss.
I just wanted to jump in quickly with a, with a question. I wanted to thank you first for the framing, Dr. Espinoza. I thought, I think that's really beautiful. Si soy, si puedo, si voy. And I think, you know, as, as we have gotten accustomed with our four Es, it would be great for our community. You know, it's a, it's a process, right? Like to get accustomed to the, this is the si voy series, the si puedo, you know, the series. And, and to make sure that Latino families understand that framework, I think would be really important. So I wanted to thank you. I think it's a great framework. I love seeing the puentistas going on college tours. I think that's wonderful. Very excited, excited to see that. My question is, it's more like a question and a comment on how we can improve on family engagement. Because when we passed, as you know, the history of the resolution, there was a big call for family engagement. And even though we have a lot of OFI staff that speaks Spanish and Alejandra, I know you do a great job. You're the only one I hear from whenever we do un taller or a workshop. You know, I, I get the information from you. But I would love to see though, in the, in the district, and I think what Latino families have been saying for a long time, and I, and this is no surprise, Superintendent, and I have discussed this in our meetings with Latinos Unidos at Berkeley, is how do we make sure we're more connected with our principals? Because principals are trusted ambassadors to our familias. And it's true that our familias like convivios, but they like to hear about these things also from our principals. And so as part of our, our family engagement framework, how do we make sure that when we have our talleres? And I know our event adelante in the fall, I was heartbroken because there was so much great work into it and we didn't have, we had one family that came, one, you know, one person who came to an amazing workshop. And you know, that I think there was a missed opportunity around engagement. So how do we make sure that our principals are also sending out information about these different talleres and have that understanding of the framework? So that's one question. And the second question is, how do we continue to work with, with our schools or with our site administrators on some kind of PD around how to best engage in a, in a culturally responsive way with our Latino families, right? Like I think that trust building part, particularly if you're newly arrived immigrant refugee, is very important. And so how do we continue to engage with our administrators so that, so that they understand why it's so important that they find out about these convivios from them as trusted ambassadors? Yeah, so those are, those are my questions.
Well, shared, you know, part of the learning from the fall was the need for like coordinated efforts and, and both not to flood the market where like people tune out because we're, we're, you know, trying to advertise or invite folks to 15 things, you know, randomly all, all the time, but also to make sure that they are getting it from people that they trust. And so part of the work of our family engagement under Lydia's leadership is to A, recognize that Alejandra is not the family engagement person for our that Alejandra is not the family engagement person for our Latinx students solely, that regardless of your race background or language proficiency, that we all own and share the success of our Latino students. And so that's part of it, and weaving that in. And part of making sure everyone can own that, both our principals, our family engagement folks, and then the staff at the work is to, has been to coordinate and plan ahead, because we've been trying to like find resource, put something together, put it out there, do the next thing, put something together, put it out there. And now, as we were able to share, we spent a lot of time in December and then the first weeks of January, putting kind of a whole program together for this semester that we can now start to build understanding around and present and promote as a full package under a framework, which we also are rolling out and understanding as well. So that's kind of the big effort, I think, that we're trying this year, in addition to getting more feedback directly involving our families. So we have not only our Latinos and Unidos de Berkeley families, but also these, we're cultivating these new groups of families through the Project to Inspire, which I invite all of you on March 28 is their graduation ceremony, where we'll be celebrating them and their leadership. And we'd love to have our board members present. But we're building out all of these leaders within our community, family leaders within our community that will also partner with our staff to promote and support and also to present and be facilitators on many of these events.
Thank you. I don't know if we're going to respond. Alejandra was going to call in, another colleague, but you were going to respond. Go ahead.
I also want to add that the leadership program isn't so that the parents do all of the work. It is definitely more an opportunity for parents to feel like they have the capacity to advocate and come to these spaces. And so, and to get an understanding of how the public school system works, especially here in Berkeley, and getting them to understand how to go about all these things respectfully, right, and collaborating as a community with everybody. And so it's definitely something that we talk a lot in our OFI meetings about how can we get that same level of, I don't want to, respect is not the right word, but that same level to par with our principals where like, there is a lot that we have to share as OFI staff members and a lot of techniques of how to engage. And so we just need a space to be able to do so. And so if we are provided with the space, then we can become partners on how to do that as a whole.
Thank you. Sounds like a good growth opportunity for us. Colleagues, Director Babbitt, do you have a question?
Yes. Thank you again for that presentation, for all the details. And trust me, we love photos. You're taking a play out of the superintendent's book with all the photos. We love to see the babies. But also want to acknowledge the work at Longfellow around the Puente program and to just really be mindful of the mentorship we can develop with our Puente Berkeley High School students, as well as with our Puente Longfellow students, just being intentional about that collaboration as a part of future next steps, if it's not already happening. I do want to hone in on the family aspect of it. It is really great. The Longfellow teacher comes out and supports our students when they're in district-wide competitions and everything else. So they really do create that familial space, even at the middle school level. I want to ask a question around how we are also engaging our E-LAC families with the Latinx resolutions. While I realize our multilingual program is more than Spanish, I didn't hear any, we talked a lot about Latinos, Unidos de Berkeley, but I don't want to exclude those active parents. And they also have a question about how do we make sure that our Latinx families are really understanding what's happening with their children's IUP plans? And are we really participating in that part of support?
Thank you. So our E-LAC families and D-LAC families are core members. And so a lot of the si puedo, family engagement and leadership work, including those that are working with Alejandra and CAVE right now, many of them are E-LAC members. We also have, through CAVE, in April, April is National Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month. And we've organized with them some focused opportunities to learn about the English learner roadmap in ways as families that you can advocate and support instructional developments and for your own students' instructional needs. And so those are things that we're specifically attending to, that are geared in particular for E-LAC families, although they're open to others. And then the second question was, oh, for IUPs. So that's certainly a specific topic that we want to explore. We actually just purchased books for all of our family engagement folks and are working with our partners. We're celebrating Disability Awareness and History Month right now to build common conversations and understandings amongst our family engagement team. And then vice versa, as Alejandra is saying, part of capacity building is also us building capacity of our staff to work with our families, to navigate those. Right now, it's being addressed more on an individual basis by our family engagement folks at the school sites.
I just would also want to add that in last spring, D-LAC's recommendation for LCAP, there were a couple of components that they identified there. One was around additional supports for mental health services. So you can see that reflected in the workshops. They also wanted more information about how to promote toward reclassification. So workshops that we have around the seal of bilinguism and multilingualism can help address some of those requests.
Thank you. I see Vice President Brown. And then I think, do you have any questions? I'll go to Vice President Brown next.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for this exciting presentation. It's so wonderful to see all the ways in which the Latinx resolution is becoming a reality. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It was really exciting to hear about the efforts around family engagement and you all's ability to kind of pick up quickly after the board made the approval to the addendum to the resolution to ensure that there were Spanish-speaking family engagement specialists. And so thank you for providing the update about what's going on with our family engagement specialists. I was also happy to hear about the updates from Puente and to hear about the puentistas in Cohort One and Cohort Two. I think Puente is a really fabulous program in that it focuses on access to English classes and to counseling, which we're doing in our school district, as well as college exposure, community building opportunities for students and more. And so it's always great to hear and to be able to see those in action through the photos that you provided tonight. One of the points in the Latinx resolution talks about college and career readiness, but specifically around college enrollment, and that there was a reduction in the enrollment of Latinx students into college programs. And so I'd like to know, I could almost imagine that Puente, you know, helps to support this work, but I'd like to know more about what we're doing as a district to address that item in the Latinx resolution. And in addition to that, the Latinx resolution calls out math support and a math focus for Latinx students. We went through the data pretty quickly. You all know that I kind of geek out over data, so it was too quick for me. But I do want to have a conversation. I don't know if it needs to be an additional presentation, but I want to have a conversation around what happened with our students for math. I took the opportunity to look at the California dashboard, and I saw that our Latinx students increased their math scores by 3.6 percent, or 3.6 points. And that is a success story. At the time that this Latinx resolution was written, it was recorded that before, right before, our students had actually had a reduction in points, and we were trying to figure out best ways to close that achievement gap. So to hear that there's been an increase of 3.6 points, that's really, really great. And I'd love to know more about this success story and about the work that was done and maybe the best practices that were used so that we could share this district-wide. So those are my comments and my two questions. One around our math success that we've seen, and the second one around what we are doing to prepare students to enroll in college and how Puente is possibly supporting that effort.
We might have to defer the math one, but we have it noted to bring back. But I do want to give a chance to share a little bit about the college enrollment work.
Okay, so my partner in this work, or one of my partners in this work, is Ms. Yasmin Navarro at Berkeley High School in the College and Career Center, which we're super lucky to have her in this role. And so one of the things in terms of engaging our families of the benefits of Puente and what we do in Puente is, you know, when you think about the process of going to college, oftentimes junior year is the year of pressure of like, okay, things are starting to get real, we're looking at applications, we're starting to have these conversations. But the benefit is that with Yasmin's help, we've been able to do frequent credit checks, grade checks throughout the year, starting from their sophomore year. So how are things looking in math? How are they looking in world language? And okay, what kind of things do we need to make sure that we have for next semester to make sure that we get that grade that we want, or that we're retaking that class for that application that's going to come down the line? I'll also mention that she has been awesome in pushing into classes and exposing our kids to the resources at Berkeley City College with dual enrollment, and just explaining how does the process work? Do you have your Peralta ID, getting that going? In terms of future planning in the spring semester and next year, we're looking to host workshops around college application processes, as well as FAFSA workshops, like they were mentioning earlier, starting at Open House, but specifically for Puente families. What else? Of course, the exposure and going to colleges, as we know, will increase these students' likelihoods of actually attending a four-year university. And just really like, just, I think, the eyes on the students and the care on the students, if you have the counselor, you have this English teacher that's been with you and knows you and can kind of help you along in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any more questions before we move on to the next item? Director Shnaski?
Another question is, I want to tell you, say thank you for this comprehensive program and the update. That's really impressive, and I think you're making a big difference for these students. And thanks again for your hard work. Thanks.
And Director Babbitt?
Thank you. One more quick thing, just for the public, in case you were a little confused, as I was, and looking at the data charts, if you see a number in red, that's the number that goes below. If you see it in yellow, it goes in the yellow section, and those are percentages. So hopefully that'll help someone, as it helped me. I learned that at our strap meeting yesterday.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your presentation and all the great work. Please invite us to the graduation for the inaugural Puente graduation. Would love to be there. And thank you so much for coming out tonight. And now, before we move on to the next item, Ms. Tires, I'd like to take a 10-minute break for the board and give our student director the opportunity to go home, should she choose to. Yeah, so we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and have the update on the governor's budget. Yeah, so we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and have the update on the governor's budget.
We got the beep, we got the beep. Not long. I wish Emily was here, but it says, everybody knows about the 3.3 million. And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna skip over some of these slides. I'm not gonna go through everyone. Let's do it. Is it up? It's very depressing. How? Could have gotten a negative score though.
All right, I think. Colleagues, if I could have you back on the dice so we can start, that would be great.
It was three, it was three points, all right? Like mid-year cuts. Why am I seeing my screen? This can't, this. Oh, it's the same exactly.
Okay, Ms Follinsby, we are almost ready.
All right, presentation mode, please, Ms Terez.
We are on presentation discussion item 13.2, Governor's Budget Update.
But the clicker isn't working. No, it's not. It was the technology.
If not, I'll look at them for you, but just.
Use it upside down.
Yeah, it's the big button.
I did, I didn't work, yeah. All right, let me go back. Okay, is everybody? We're waiting for. Yeah, my mic's on, and we're ready to go?
Yes, we're ready.
It is on. Can you, I was just too far away. So, good evening, board members and members of the public that's still here. I'll be presenting the Governor's Update to the 24-25 budget. And this is, we present, we do all our presentations, being very aware of our mission and our four Es. So it's excellence, equity, engagement, and enrichment. So the Governor presented the 24-25 budget, and it's, the, there is a shortfall, a $37.9 billion shortfall in the budget, and his projection is actually a little bit less pessimistic than the legislative offices. But the good thing about this budget is that there are no mid-year cuts, and it is a balanced budget, even though he's doing temporary measures to balance the budget. So the good news, we do have significant financial investments based on prior years. The state is better prepared to weather a financial downturn due to record levels of reserves, not actual revenue, but reserves. But the bad news, and I should be following this along here, because I can read it better here. The bad news is the, we may not be able to fund above the minimum reserve, and that this, to mitigate the shortfall, the solution is unprecedented and not widely or clearly understood. So the Governor did have a balanced budget. He is using measures to make sure we have no cuts, but it's not widely understood in terms of how this will actually play out. And despite the significant underperformance of general fund revenues, there are no new cuts or deferrals. So you may remember back in the, in previous years, the Governor implemented deferrals, where we would actually get our revenues later than projected. We have no deferrals in this budget, and we are, we are, the general fund has spiked using for one-time purposes, that's now paying dividends. So we had a lot of one-time investments that's actually coming to fruition right now. The bad news is we're in a COLA-only year, and that means, and the COLA has been reduced. So that's not particularly good news. So this next slide looks at a historical look at our COLAs, our cost of living adjustments. And the last bar is the representation for 24-25, which is a 0.76 percent COLA. So looking at the bars right next to it, you can see that those years were really significantly higher. So this year, this present, this budget can actually be seen as a correction of COLA. We're no longer in the years of unprecedented COLAs. 0.76 is low, but it's more of a correction as opposed to a significant drop. So what's not in the education budget? We talked about no cuts, and that's a good thing, no deferrals, and we're not planning on sweeping the budget. So that's, those are good things that are, that's not impacting education. So this next slide looks at the funding factors based on the COLA. So the COLA at 0.76 percent does increase our per grade level funding, and then we're also getting our grade span adjustment. So most of these are getting a COLA, is just significantly less than the projected COLA that we had when the Governor enacted the prior year budget. So this slide shows the significant change in our COLAs. It's not only for 24-25, but it's also for 25-26 and 26-27. So when we presented the first interim for 23-24, remember, we also presented a multi-year. So the multi-year starts with 24-25 and 25-26. So what this slide is doing is looking at what we had when the Governor enacted the budget in June versus his now January proposal for 24-25. So you can see in June, we had projected, and we built our budget based on the information that we had at the time, a COLA of 3.94 percent for 24-25 and 3.29 for 25-26. That was in the multi-year projection. So now in January '24, you can see that the COLA has gone from 3.94 to 0.76 percent, and from 3.29 to 2.73 percent in 25-26. So what does this mean for BUSD? So with the reduction in the, in the COLA, and this looks, this looks a little backwards, but it's not. So the June prediction was what we brought to you at first interim. The Governor's Budget is what was just proposed. So you can see the dollar impact for 24-25 is a $3.3 million in reduction in revenue that everybody's talking about. So that's the number that's focused, that's everybody's focusing on. And as a reminder, we're just looking at one side of the equation. This is just the revenue assumptions and using the government, Governor's assumption to build our budget. We have not talked about the budget target or what our reductions are. This is just informing our revenue. We will then take that information and build our budget target with all the other factors that we have to consider. Next slide, the $3.3 million, this is a breakdown between our base and our supplemental. So our base funding is going to see a significant reduction of $3.1 million. Our supplemental approximately $200,000, and the total LCFF revenue, 3.3, the loss of $3.3 million, very significant numbers. So with this, so the COLA doesn't only obviously impact the unrestricted general fund and the LCFF, other state funding will be, will be impacted as well. And in this group, we have to look at special education. So when we worked with our CELPO, when we presented first interim, they gave us an assumption that they would be getting a 3.64 percent COLA. So their COLA is also going to be impacted. So not only will this be impacting the general fund, it also will be impacting our other funding. So this is a dot board. We use a dot board from school services to inform our budget and build all our data points. So we're seeing the COLA, we have the CPI. What's interesting on this slide is that our CAL stars rate remains, even the 19.1 doesn't go up year over year, but you can see that we have an increase in the CAL per's rate. I think that's the most important takeaway from that slide. So along with our challenges of reduced funding, we also have to adhere to our certificated and now classified layoff schedules. So we'll be working with HR in terms of making sure that we're meeting these deadlines. But the March 15 letters, the certificated and classified staff will be receiving these letters. So we're obviously going to be planning and looking at this information to ensure that we meet these deadlines. Next slide, the road ahead. We are, let's see, the next steps, responsibility, da-da-da-da-da. So it's basically looking forward to the May revise and working with the Legislative Analyst Office and the Governor to kind of flesh out these things further, as well as then deciding next steps in terms of the May revise. So internally, we will continue to work with our budget partners to develop the 24-25 budget. We obviously will be updating our assumptions based on changes as they are made aware to us. And then, of course, the Governor's May revise will be our next opportunity to get information in terms of data points to build our budget, and the enacted state budget is in June. So this is also the time when we'll be working with our superintendent's budget advisory committee to come up with a budget cut target and working with our partners to meet that target to, so that we'll continue to have a balanced budget. So on that note, I can take questions. If anybody has any questions, I can provide answers for.
Colleagues, if you have any questions, Director Shinaski.
One thing that jumped out at me right away is we're talking about this as a $3 million, give or take, right? $3 million cut, but it's a $3 million smaller increase than we had expected.
Yes.
So I just, I think we do have to make hard decisions because we know that costs are increasing, but it's not actually a cut to our base. It's a cut to what we expected we were going to get this year, right?
Right. It's a reduction in what we had projected previously.
Thank you.
On the revenue side, we haven't looked at expenses, targets, or anything at this point.
But I just wanted to appreciate and echo that clarification. We, that came up in the joint advisory committee that Director Brown, Director Babett mentioned, and we had to make that clarification, and we're also, we know that's going to be a part of the messaging that we have to communicate distinguishing $3.3 million worth of reductions versus cut. And we're doing, we did that work also even with our staff, because there's just a misunderstanding about that.
Uh, Director Babett?
When will be, when the, when will we have the actual cut target that we're looking at? Especially if we're talking about getting layoff notice so, so quickly.
So we'll be, we'll be working in BLT and SBAC to come up with that target. So we're actively working on that. So I would, I would think by early February, we should have an idea, because we then, we're looking at several other factors.
Director Sheng, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. You talked about other reductions that we, that we might expect in specifically, specifically special education. Do you know when we'll have like a more concrete number?
And we'll work with our CELPO to get that information. They will be unpacking this and sharing their information with us.
Do they give you a timeline for that?
We usually, well, we had a meeting last week, but they'll be on, I will, I can check with Katie, Adam, or CELPO for them to kind of give us their information.
Yeah, I'm wondering if that could be, well, whenever you receive it, if it could be shared with the Board of Directors. Thank you.
Colleagues, any additional questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, sure. Oh, yes, Director Shinoski.
Just as a comment, I, I just wanted that clarification just so that we're all on the same page. But I, I do want to emphasize that there is hard, this was short, but there's hard work to come because obviously our costs all around the Bay Area are increasing significantly. So I just don't want to leave this presentation without sort of us all and the public being mindful about the hard decisions that are ahead of us this year. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes all of our agenda items for this evening's meeting. We will now move to extended public comments. Is there anyone here for public comments? See, one, two, three, four. Thank you. So we have in-person folks for public comment? One, one student? If you could fill out your comment cards, so I can call you up. And we'll start with this student first. Yeah, you can say, you can say your name. Why don't, you can proceed and just say your name. And then we'll follow with the other two speakers, and then we'll move to our online comments. And we'll give you two minutes each.
Okay. Hi, board members. Just to reiterate on something you were talking about before. Like, I really appreciate everything you've done so far in getting us closer to an ethnic studies curriculum that covers what we need. And just keep doing that, please. And like, we need this curriculum. Our ethnic studies teachers know what they're doing. So just as fast as possible, and that would be amazing. And then also in terms of trans rights, just so many of my friends each day spend 15 minutes waiting in line for the bathroom. So many people are scared to use the bathroom. So many people don't drink water in the mornings because they're scared. Can't focus in school because they need to pee. And just, that's dangerous. I know people who have, have had to go to the hospital because they've had like problems with not being able to use the bathroom at school. So I understand you've been doing some things behind the scenes, but we need to know what change is going to happen and when it's going to happen because it's a really horrible reality for trans students at Berkeley High. We've been, we've been fighting this a while, and it just feels like we don't know what's happening. We haven't heard much about what's happening. We need, we need to know what's happening. We need to know that people are standing up for us. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any additional comments, in-person comments? Sure, if you could state your name. And you'll have two minutes.
All right. My name is Monsi. And actually, back in during earlier COVID era, I volunteered with the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. And so I feel like I grown sort of a connection to the school district here in that sense. But I really do see back then, and even now, back then, it was a Black Lives Matter movement that really took hold, and I saw Berkeley really come and like show up. And right now, I feel like Berkeley can do the same too. And the ethnic studies program and including Palestine in it is a way to also show that Berkeley's here standing together with our brothers and sisters over there and siblings. So I think studies is so important because it teaches us and connects all the communities and strengthens our communities by centering uplifting the historically marginalized people. And it's, Berkeley is just a place that has done this. And like, our schools have already had this program. And I think just expanding it to include Palestinian studies would be great. Like, I didn't grow up in a high school that had even an ethnic studies program. So it's really beautiful to like be here, come here, study at Berkeley, and then see that, wow, like this is here. And I'm barely learning in college when students could be learning in high school, if not earlier. So what you all are doing is really great. And I would just encourage to keep expanding and show that our communities and our marginalized communities are very connected, and all of our struggles are really connected. And learning about liberation is also really beautiful, and it's about love at the end of the day. And like, it's, all of our histories are connected. So learning, that's really important. But thank you so much for your time. I know it's late, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now we will move to online comments. We have, I'm going to call Haseeb Chadri, followed by Camille Santana.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in this meeting. I have been a Berkeley resident for over 30 years and a proud father of three Berkeley High alumni. Berkeley has been a symbol of freedom of speech, equality, and inclusiveness. And I'm shocked that all our values go out the window when it comes to the Palestinians. Please don't let our humanity and morality become casualty of war. We need to talk about war, oppression, and genocide. We need to educate our children about the world we live in and not suppress debate because some extremist agenda. Please leave the value that we teach our kids. Please do the right thing and let our teachers and students discuss what is going on in Gaza and Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Now we'll move on to Camille Santana, followed by Iman Chadri.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Camille. I have a daughter at Thousand Oaks Elementary. I wanted to first start off with expressing solidarity with our Berkeley High School students that have been coming for several meetings. I want to say that our students are our life and our love. And our Berkeley High School students that have been calling for protection and the right to access for trans young people to access safe bathrooms. We need to hear that and, and respond to that immediately. If I were in your shoes, I'd probably show up at Berkeley High School and, and take turns with my colleagues to make sure that there was like support to keep those bathrooms safe in any way I could. These are all our kids, and I feel so inspired. And as a mom, I feel that love and I feel that fierce call of protection. So I just want to also be in solidarity with them. I want to let you know that the parents who've been attacking our teachers for teaching about Palestine are one view. The Jewish Zionist narrative thrives on silencing and threatening opposition. They follow calculated playbooks to counter every mention of truth, fact, and history to create their own narrative of truth. That is the cause of close to 30,000 deaths of Palestinians. Let's be clear when we talk about real factual violence. The Palestinians right now are being massacred. We and those connected to Palestine are outraged, we're grieving, we're hurting. We need you to recognize and protect this community because the president, our senators, and all of Western media and leadership in Berkeley City is not. BUSD is our community, and you are our leadership. And you have the power to do right in your sphere of influence. It is necessary that we hold space for the most marginalized group in this equation, Palestinians. Truth is always on the side of the oppressed, and that is why it is more critical than ever to support liberated ethnic studies in our schools. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Iman Chadri, followed by Sahar, BUSD parent. Ms. Chires, I see Sahar first. Okay. If you could unmute Sahar.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sahar. I'm a journalist and the mother of a middle schooler at BUSD. This is election year, and Trump in his victory speech in New Hampshire called pro-Palestinian supporters jihadists, while saying he'd hunt down green card holders attending rallies and have them deported. This is the kind of hateful and hostile environment our Palestinian, Arab, Muslim, and immigrant students, staff, and families will have to deal with all of this here. Students feel unsafe wearing kafiyas. Teachers are being intimidated by an organized group of parents making false accusations. So I'm asking you to be brave and protect teaching Palestine in liberated ethnic studies and protect Arab and Muslim students and staff so we can continue to hold and care for our most marginalized communities and encourage honest and safe dialogue about the genocide in Gaza. Since the school year started, more children have been killed by the Biden-supported Israeli war than children served by our district. We can't stop the bombs, but we can, and we can't stop Trump's hateful rhetoric. But we have a responsibility to courageously teach, learn, and speak out about the American bombs killing thousands of Palestinian children. I'm so grateful for this space and your leadership, and I hope that you really will make the moves to protect liberated ethnic studies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Iman Chadri, who disappeared from my screen, but I don't know if you were able to promote them. That person's no longer online. Then we'll move on to Hanan, and then Ilana Pearlman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Hanan, and I am a Berkeley resident. Thank you so much for hosting this, having this space today so that we can share a public comment. As a Berkeley resident, I think it's important to mention that I'm also American Palestinian. And I think it's time to receive support from Berkeley Unified School District to support our Arab and our Muslim students who are experiencing hopelessness dealing with anti-Muslim, anti-Arab racism. But not just from students who are wearing kafiyas. I'm sorry, not just from students, but also from faculty and teachers. Having the space within the school district to allow students to protest and talk about the current genocide going on in Gaza is extremely important. And as a Palestinian, I would love to feel the support of my community. My hope is that by bringing this to your attention, it is to have and to allow space and an understanding for our Muslim students and our Arab community to actually have a voice. And as a Palestinian-American, I feel there isn't a sense of community. I feel sometimes I have to hide my identity because of the fear of being, because of the fear of anti-Arab and anti-Palestinian and anti-Muslim hate. I hope that you guys can address these concerns. I thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to Iman Chadri. This is my third attempt to unmute this person and then see if it works.
Hi, so sorry about the tech issues. I appreciate you being patient with me. My name is Iman. I am a Berkeley High graduate. I graduated in 2017. And I am here to vehemently ask you to support the ethnic studies program at Berkeley High and to support our teachers in teaching what's happening in Palestine. When I was there, I was really proud of how we celebrated free speech and how we talked about current events. And that is what this is. This is a current event that is happening, and millions are being killed. There's a genocide happening, and it would be a crime to not let the students and the teachers talk about that in the classroom. If this was happening in any other country in the world, we would all be talking about it. If this is important enough to be on the news for the presidential elections, to be talking about it, every press conference I see where the president is talking about it, if it's that important, then we should be able to be talking about it in our classrooms as well. So I really want to emphasize that. And this doesn't have to be a bias, a biased discussion. The journalists that are coming out of Palestine are providing so many facts, and that's what we should be talking about. What are the facts? There's so much video evidence of what's happening. There is so much that can be discussed when it comes to journalism, when it comes to how we document history and talking about it in the now and not letting the oppressors rewrite what's happening and, you know, not giving the students a chance to talk about it and talking about it 50 years later, once the history has been rewritten. So I think it's really important that we allow our students to, you know, discuss this in the present and to support the Palestinian and Muslim and Arab students in being able to discuss this with their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Ilana Pearlman, followed by Eliza. And then we, we have Mati Tabum and Daniel, who will be our last speaker. Ms. Pearlman, if you could unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I spoke earlier in person, and I wanted to conclude, I'm sorry, finish my speech. And earlier, I was speaking about my child's experience of antisemitism and removal from his classroom. And I just wanted to let the community know that hundreds of Jewish and Israeli students are leaving BUSD classrooms and entire school districts due to the hostile antisemitic environment that has been allowed to fester in the Bay Area. Our main ask of this school board is that you please help us get back to the important work of centering our students by enforcing the policies that were established to protect all marginalized communities, including Jews and Palestinians. And I ask that you support unbiased curriculum that will unite this generation of learners instead of further dividing them. I really appreciate the idea of a town hall on discussing ethnic studies with an experienced neutral moderator. And I want to point out that none of us are asking to get rid of ethnic studies. I just want to make that very important distinction. We believe in ethnic studies. We believe in uplifting marginalized peoples. And we also ask that for recognition of Jews as marginalized peoples as well so that we can begin to understand Jewish history in addition to Palestinian history. I think both are very important, and I think that this is not a binary issue of one versus the other. I think these are two incredibly and historically marginalized groups that both need discussion and attention. And the last thing I was going to say is that I have spoken out to the Berkeley City Council numerous times about hosting peace and unity events for Jews and Palestinians in Berkeley, especially those of us who have family in the region. I think that would be really important, and I just, I would like to be able to feel closer to one another as residents and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eliza, followed by Mati Tabum, and our last speaker, who will be Daniel. You could unmute yourself, Eliza.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Eliza Noe. I'm here to comment on the Literacy Progress Report, which states that BUSD will assess current intervention supports in the middle schools against local data and evidence. If you recall, the Court Monitor's report just a few weeks ago, Mr. Ellis dedicated a whole presentation slide on LIP Action 23, quote, "Consult with the outside consultants regarding proposed changes to district-wide reading intervention and special education," end quote. BUSD showed minimal progress on this action because of concerns that it was not sufficiently consulting the external consultant. Related to this, I understand that BUSD plans to use the READ 180 program, designed for grades three through 12, as an intervention to teach comprehension. I urge the board to investigate whether the LIP outside consultant was actually consulted on whether READ 180 meets the LIP criteria. I urge the board also to investigate if the, quote, "The selected Tier Two and Tier Three programs will be aligned with the International Dyslexia Association's knowledge and practice standards," end quote, as explicitly required by the settlement. Simply put, does READ 180 meet IDA standards for teaching comprehension for students needing effective, evidence-based Tier Two and Tier Three interventions? The IDA provides clear guidance on what builds students' comprehension skills. In fact, they have a guide called "Building Knowledge Can Help Build Comprehension Success." As the title states, the IDA recommends knowledge-building strategies, and I'll email that to you. As the title states, the IDA recommends knowledge building strategies and I'll email that to you. Please be, beware of district complacency with mediocre interventions just because there are programs we already have.
Thank you, Ms. No. Next comment will be by Mati Tabum and then our last commenter will be Daniel.
Uh, good evening again. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we hear you.
Excellent, thank you. I hope you are, you're okay with me finishing the meeting from home. I have that privilege. Um, I'm listening to the comments, the last few comments and I mean, it's just, it just uh kind of following what Ilana said about this kind of pitching against each other and this binary look at it. I'm wondering, have you heard anybody say, don't teach Palestine? Or don't teach ethnic studies? Or somebody claimed that only Jews are marginalized and Palestinians are not? That's not the case. Nobody's trying to prevent anything from being discussed or be talked in the appropriate ways as very well defined in the policies that we expected the, 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 the school district to, to uphold. Just that, that's just an observation to what was said here before. Also, somebody mentioned, again, hyperbole, millions of casualties. We have, you know, and kind of talking about, uh, I want to salute what uh the um, um Director Brown's um idea of having a town hall. I think our first town hall to be, to learn to talk, to talk about how we learn to talk before we talk about subjects because hyperbole and kind of um, you know, taking things out of context has been raining around here. And we're not able to even talk about anything with each other. We, we share so many things that we would like to do, all these communities that are being coming to the room. Last thing, um, just kind of touching on, kind of taking uh superintendent's uh um habit to, to refer to the students as babies. Um, I, I, I see that as a, as a great.
Thank you for your comment. Feel free to uh email your full comment to the board. And our last uh public speaker will be Daniel.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the time. Um, I am a parent of two BUSD students. I live and work in Berkeley and I vote in Berkeley. We heard a lot tonight about the marginalized communities, about the need to protect our most vulnerable communities, and I could not agree more. Our Jewish students and Jewish staff also feel invisible, similar to the Palestinian constituents and their comments here tonight. These Jewish students and staff also feel unsafe here in Berkeley by this school district and by this staff and administration. The constant bombardment of a pro Palestinian narrative leveled at the, by teacher, staff and students, the ongoing finger pointing and posters and antisemitism, the hanging of political slogans and political posters and flags by teachers in their classrooms that make students feel unincluded, unsafe and discriminated against continues to fester here in the BUSD. And this is only magnified and made worse by the LES curriculum that seeks to further marginalize Jewish students through half-truths, fictions and biased political ideologies. California Education Code, Section 51500 explicitly prohibits teachers from giving instruction that promotes discriminatory bias against characteristics listed in Section 220, including nationality, ethnicity and religion. Teachers are prohibited from giving instruction that promotes bias or bigotry against Jews, Israelis, Muslims and Palestinians. And the drafts of the California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum were modified to remove this harmful content because they were deemed inappropriate by the State Board of Education. However, an effort to prevent this material from being inserted into the curriculum of local school districts led to the guardrails of Assembly Bill 101. And now our students are reporting that teachers are using these same materials that the state deemed biased and inappropriate, including antisemitic materials. Superintendent's.
Thank you very much for your comments. If you have additional comments, feel free, feel free to email them to the board. Um, now we will move on to extended board member comments. Colleagues, do any of you have extended board member comments? Director Shinaski? Director Shinaski?
I'm sorry, colleagues. Um, but I've been remiss in not reporting out some of the work that I've been doing and I was reminded of it tonight. So I want to take this opportunity to do that. Um, and that is around um some work that I've been doing with the Subcommittee of G-Shack. Um, and a Subcommittee that is really focused on our trans kids and ensuring that we have a really all gender inclusive uh school system. Uh, bathrooms are one part of that. And so I just want to give a quick update on sort of the work that has been happening around the bathrooms. Um, we, we all, I think I share with my board colleagues and superintendent and administrator's staff, everyone that it's really awful to hear, um, you know, that students are struggling and not able to access something just as simple and basic as a bathroom. Um, so a law was passed this year, um, ensuring that we would have at least one all gender bathroom per school site in the state of California. And that was great and many people, you know, cheered for that. Um, Berkeley was ahead of the game there. We had, we have one, at least one all gender bathroom um per school site. And obviously it's not enough. And there are a ton of stumbling blocks and I'm not saying this, you know, to put up excuses. It's, it's part of why it's taking longer than we would all hope it is, would, would take. Um, we can't change our bathrooms without triggering a cascade of very expensive, very time-consuming, very invasive upgrades to some older buildings. And so that is really the primary sort of barrier to getting done what we need to get done. Um, I am committed and I think others on the board are committed as well to ensuring that any new construction really incorporates more spaces for our, for all gendered um students. And also we're trying to look at creative solutions outside of converting bathrooms um through these building codes. And so it is, it is top of mind to me. It's top of mind to um others on the board. It's top of mind to administrators and staff. It's top of mind to the um G-Shack Committee and also the Subcommittee of G-Shack that I'm part of. So um we'll keep, we'll keep going, we'll keep trying, we'll keep working. Um, and I hope that the public will continue to advocate um on behalf of all students. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Shinaski, and thank you for your tireless advocacy on this issue. Now, um, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out. The meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education is hereby adjourned at 10:11 PM. Thank you.